All right, we're gonna call the Ramsey County Commission meeting order. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes for pre this meeting. We have a motion, six, one, fifty for the second. We'll give it a week because I think you want. Additions or corrections in the minute? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close on sign, motion carries. Agenda, we're gonna add Lakewood District Health right up top first because they're here with everyone, other than now. The motion approved is not in the second. All in favor, vote by saying aye. Two, three, four, five, motion carries. Okay, who do we have from District Health, Andrew?
An act.
The caller is Chris?
Yep, she's coming.
She's coming. The camera's here, so we'll search that next.
Good evening. I'm gonna stay by ventilation. I'm stepping away from you. Jeff called us to our attention earlier, the documents that you submitted, Adam, regarding the Ramsey County courthouse lockdown effective tomorrow, I'm assuming, effective tomorrow morning?
No, we intend, yes, if it has.
Okay. And with that information, we will disseminate that out right away in the morning to our staff. But at this time, we don't have the capability or the ability to shut down, if you will.
Yep.
We were considered essential
Yep.
public health staff and communications are a priority at this time. As of this afternoon, the governor mandated, not mandated, he recommended the social distancing starting today. And with that being said, we're just breaking all sorts of rules right here. But it's rather short notice and the facts are that this is so rapidly evolving, the COVID issues with the high-risk persons, some of which we have here in our meeting this evening. So the recommendations are, of course, social distancing. But the big message, if you have any of the symptoms of even seasonal influenza, which can mix with the COVID coronavirus nineteen symptoms, which are primarily cough, sore throat, and shortness of breath. That being said, body aches, aching, and just feeling sluggish have been chief complaints also in the positive victims or the positive patients. So there again, once we get to a couple of those symptoms, we've got a cascading of issues going on, which involves probable exposure, community exposure. We can identify community exposure by absence of any other underlying risks, such as no recent travel, no contact of known contact of a positive patient. The underlying message is if you're ill, if you have any symptoms, self-isolate and stay home. Any direct questions as far as what we are doing at this point from a public health perspective?
The only question I would have is, so you're essential and obviously I recognize that. So the way I'm proposing to structure entrance and exit to the courthouse is okay. As long as they still have the ability to access public health, it's just a matter of, they would have to call into public health, say they're here to access your services and then you would have to allow them in. Is that okay?
Yes, yes, that is okay.
Okay.
And internally, we, last week already, have been practicing social distancing and appointments with one at a time and spacing them, so we're not all congregating at the same time. We've internally been practicing that. But like I just said, it's constantly and rapidly emerging. And what I say tonight may not be valid, it may be a moot point tomorrow. So everybody's been very understanding to this point. And I feel we'll continue to do so. But we have this mentality of North Dakota tough. And we think if, you know, my throat is a little sore, but I can't miss work today. It's not the thought process that we're encouraging at this point.
Well, like the governor said the other day, we have the second oldest population in the country. You're not staying home to protect yourself or staying home to protect your parents or grandparents or whoever else in the community.
Yes. And it's our individual responsibility to practice those measures. We don't have the privilege of being self-indulgent at this point.
Are you gonna let a inmate come down, open the door?
Well, we have to put signage. The front doors would have to be very clearly marked by 8:00 AM tomorrow morning that whatever services you are requesting, this building is currently locked. You must contact and have a listing of phone numbers to call because some may not have it on their device. Or, you know, I know we'll have people turning away, but but for social services is another, for our population, an essential service that many need. And public health of courts, I'm not aware of what they're able to.
We're pretty agile. Becky Nelson is here. She's the new clerk of court for Ramsey County.
Oh.
So she might have some words of wisdom for everyone too. Our words.
Adam, you and me talked this morning. I like the idea of having somebody man the solid door here and use that as an entrance point.
For employees?
Everybody, employees. And people that wanna see somebody in the courthouse. I think this is gonna get pretty pompous and if we're gonna have people read the papers on the windows or whatever we want them to do and then contact somebody, they're gonna get flustered, I'm afraid. And I don't think we're serving the public very well by doing that. I mean, we're in something we've never seen before, there's no question. So I think if we can get somebody to man that, whether we have to hire an individual, we're not gonna get that done by 8:00 AM tomorrow morning.
Right.
Governor, let me ask, I didn't hear his address today, this afternoon, what that one was?
Yeah, the 415 here.
He didn't put out any mandates, right?
No, he just, his stressed recommendations to the public are practice social distancing to date. And we've been very proactive from the national to the state to the local level. Just this morning, capacity for drive-through testing was established at our Altru campus in Diblets Lake.
I think if the mandatory commission sets up like this, because I don't want the auditor's office or the treasurer's office or the recorder's office that sits so close to that door. You know, the burden of letting people in is gonna fall on. And they got other work to do and I don't feel that we should do that. I think we need to put somebody there, you know, that can manage people coming in out of the courthouse. I think, and I know we talked about it this morning. The more I thought about it, probably the only way we should do it, you know. And we should take on that responsibility of commission and get somebody there. But a table up, whatever, we have to set up a phone system, you know. Does this person have business up in the health department? We'll call up there and you can say yes or no if you want them to come up. Would that make sense? We need an order, we need something in order.
Are you focusing on health official being the?
Any walk of life here, anybody coming up, right? That's who we're here to serve.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but I think the governor that's asking is?
Who's at the door?
Who's at the door?
We'll have to find out. Yeah, we're gonna name, relay that to whatever department.
No, no, no.
We'll have to man the door.
Who's manning the door?
Who's gonna man the door? Wow, it's up to us to find somebody. We're not gonna find somebody by tomorrow morning at eight.
My thought process was, and we're kinda rolling off, but I'll keep going, it was kinda two-fold. So you had two options. If you're gonna list all the numbers and say whatever department you need to talk to or whichever one you plan on, you could either call and then we would have one person from that department come down and allow that person in and follow them in. They would do their business and then leave immediately. Or we would have the ability, if we wanted to, to have somebody man that door. But then we're gonna have to figure out how to do that. And I don't know if we're staffed to do that right now, like you said. So it's a matter of, can we pull somebody from another duty to do that? Or do we wanna do it where it's just, like you said, I don't want people to be turned away either. But at the end of the day, we have to make it functional for everybody to come in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So those are the two ways I look at it.
I'll do it tomorrow. I'll do it until we find somebody to actually do it. I'm not scared of anything, so.
You're hired.
Thank you. We'll collaborate and?
Yeah, are you still gonna be in the courthouse after this meeting? Are you headed home?
I'll send out an email yet tonight of the decision that's made.
Yeah, and we're gonna have to talk about the whole operational plan that we have in front of us and determine what we're gonna do. But that's one portion of it that's important, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, I'll do that.
Okay, with that being said, the doors will be locked? The front doors, no?
We haven't made that decision yet, but that's what I'm proposing. This is just something we're gonna talk about. I am, this isn't set in stone. If other people have, other commissioners have opinions on what they would like to do, then that's obviously something to talk about. This is what I'm proposing off of what I've seen other counties doing right now and what I feel is the correct chance. And it's not all-inclusive either, obviously. There's probably more stuff to pay off. As of now, that's my intent. I would like to lock the doors and then we could have somebody running handling the door.
My suggestion would be the entrances for the staff. There's a lot of staff that use the north entrance. Majority use the south, some use the front. Keep those locked, the front doors locked. And the manning, the intake staff would be located right inside the front entrance.
Yeah, and that would be fine. I was working under the premise that we would have people call up so it would be someplace for them to look at it, sit inside and then make the call. But if we're gonna have somebody manning it, we can just as easily use a front door.
Use the front door.
Yeah, that's fine.
And the other really big benefit of having a person there is if we can take down like the names of the people that have come through.
Right.
You know, because otherwise, if people are going all over the courthouse, you'll have no record of?
What they left behind.
Who came through. And when they left and that's actually been an addressed issue with security after hours anyway, with meetings and whatnot. Have they all left is?
I think that might be something worth discussing when we get there tonight. You know, if we are able to do that. Now, there might be certain people coming in for certain reasons that might have a case for protection of their identity, but.
Yeah.
And I know our office has, we have high standards with not revealing what they're there for, why they're there.
And I'm not saying that we would, I'm not saying that we would, you know, make a case for, explain why you're here other than, you know, whether or not it's okay that that office accepts you. I only mean this so that if an infection were to break out, you would say, well, who are all the people that have been in the courthouse who at least left and left?
Yeah, that's a good one.
And there may be clients of ours and of social services that may not be willing to share that. Are you ready to deny them access?
Again, this is not something that, like, I feel like we'll have to have the discussion when we get there. But I do think that there might be some value to that if there's a way we can implement it that is not infringing upon people's ability to seek services that might be sensitive, right?
Right.
Okay, I guess I need?
Adam, do you have some input as far as the privacy rates of clients that we're serving?
No, I mean, I think that Adam and I had a conversation. I talked with Ed. Obviously, people have privacy, but this is, I believe it's a national emergency and we need to protect our staff and we need to protect the people, the citizens that we serve. So I guess we'd have to just listen to what the proposal is.
My idea is to set Lucas up out there on a table or something with a phone and call up to the health department or give them the name. You know, you can come down and you talk to him and see if you wanna bring him in.
Right, or vice versa, right? Like if the health department knows it has a meeting with somebody, you can call down and say, you can expect so-and-so to be at the door at X time.
You know, that's, yeah, the other option I would throw out there, not trading money the waters, but we're in a situation where we have the ability to lock the building down and have key fob and things of such nature. These other counties have been locking the buildings down and I don't think they have those options. So they're doing a by appointment only. So you have to call ahead, make an appointment, say I will be there for a 3:00 appointment. Then somebody from that department knows to meet them at the front door at 3:00 to bring them in and you don't need somebody at the door. So essentially, you're locking the building down except for by appointment only.
I think that's a much better option.
Because that way, we don't have to worry about somebody getting on the door and things like that.
But I think by having people call the department that they wanted an appointment with, you never know that that individual can be served over the phone or online through some sort of documentation. They may be here for whatever reason. If they need a face-to-face, then that person can, on the phone that they're talking to, can ask them that series of questions. Have you been out of the country in the past 14 days? Have you been, you know, do you have anybody that's sick at home? Are you running a fever currently? You know, the things that, privacy issues, Luca shouldn't be asking. But that person that they're setting up that appointment with should be asking before they have that meeting. Once they're in this building, then the building itself is essentially infected when that person comes in, if they truly are sick themselves. So those are my two cents.
And we also are encouraging any employees. And we have maybe two that could work effectively and efficiently remotely. To please do so. At this point, we just, if you aren't essential, we don't, to reduce our risk is our goal.
Okay, we have any specific questions for the district health unit? And we're gonna go through the sort of recommendations. It's gonna take us a while to hammer it all, but? Any specific questions for an act of the district health? And we're gonna find a way to make sure people can access the building. It's just a matter of how do we think it's the best functional way to do it at this point in time here, so. Okay, very good.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you for coming down, appreciate it.
I'm gonna leave these cards up front. They do have the state's hotline number on there, please share. The hours have changed, ever-evolving. They are now from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week, so.
Yeah, I should have written it down too. Altru also has a straight hotline number as well. But I think if you call the state, they will patch you to the Altru hotline for the testing, I believe, correct?
And, yes, and our media has been astounding at giving that information out to the public on a, basically, an hourly basis. So I, both of the hotlines, the state health department and Altru health systems, are available online and on our radio or on our website.
Facebook has been like the quickest place to post things. I know our website, I can't access it outside of the building, so I'm unable to change it on our website. So Facebook is the place to go for the most current updates.
And please feel free to contact us if you have any urgent questions.
Of course, very good, thank you.
State it.
Okay. And we're gonna switch gears for a little bit before we come back to that then. Mr. Johnson, is he in here or is he out there still? Is somebody get Mr. Johnson?
Sorry?
You're absurd, you're absurd. I like calling Mr. Johnson when he went to school.
I'll take it.
Takes his own dignified.
Yeah, no, I've talked to Chris a little bit about replacing the surveillance system in, excuse me, in the building here. And I understand you have some questions as far as the court rules and maybe I can check some light on a few things and?
I think one of the questions I had was, what's the warranty on the cameras? How long do they last?
Comes standard with a three-year warranty with a five-year optional.
How long do you think it'll last? You've been around a while, right?
With this brand of cameras, we switched from a different vendor in 2015. And then they came out with a new line of cameras in 2018. So we still have some of the original 2015s out there, you know, and we haven't had any issue with them. How long they'll last? You know, could be 10 years, could be 15 years, could be, you know.
You're pretty comfortable with that?
I'm pretty comfortable. I mean, you know, it's a bold statement because like you said, it's electronics. There's ever-changing. Realistically, I would feel comfortable eight to 10. You know what I mean? Just that's kind of the way things are.
Chris, do you have that bid there, how much you would?
I actually don't have a, oh, you do have a bid.
Total proposal bid, 28, 170, say. Yep, that's equipment and install, that's labor and?
Thirty-seven cameras.
Yep.
Better backup and a new hard drive in the works.
How many cameras, thirty?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, yep.
You think that's comfortable for this building? You think that's enough?
There was three that we added that we walked through and there was three areas that we thought were lacking now. One was the rear entrance where I think the deputies bring people in. Another one was the front entrance and the south entrance.
The armory.
Yep.
All in facing in front of the?
Yep.
Or the Mooreville, excuse me.
Did you make it one towards the entrance in Mooreville? Remember we're talking about that?
We have to do a committee and see if we need to add any additional if you guys, as a committee, feel we missed something.
Well, yeah, if we get everything stuck in and we miss something, since we're gonna be working with somebody local too, we can always tack one tight in later, I suppose.
And there's room to grow because it's a 64-channel NVR, so there's room to add.
You got somebody pretty knowledgeable out there on this?
We've, we installed quite a few of them. Yep, we do, we've done schools, hospitals, care centers, farms. We stay pretty busy with them.
Further questions for?
No, I'm pretty comfortable.
It does have a 30, actually, there's three 10-karat hard drives that I quoted on that NVR. That would, my estimated record time for that would be right around 20 days. I thought that was a good starting point.
Is that 20 days of 37 cameras worth of footage? Or 20 days divided by 37?
And that's with the camera set to motion record. So, you know, you don't need, my opinion or normally what we do, you don't need your cameras recording 24/7, especially when nobody's here. Just burn some space in that hard drive.
So in the evenings, you could set it to just motion?
Yep.
And then they would just kick on, so we wouldn't be killing a bunch of hard drives? So maybe we make our 20 turn into 30 or something like that. Then we'd have to figure out if we're gonna only hold it for 30 and we'll have to come up with a policy if we're gonna, what we're gonna do with it? Back it up, we're gonna hold it for longer than 30 either.
So in this particular NVR, it has eight slots to put hard drives in, so?
So we could go up to 81, so we've got some experience in that. You asked the question, so it's three years? Is there any three years of warranty on the cameras? Can you buy up that warranty for any additional cost?
Two or five year you can, and that would include the NVR and the cameras themselves, like the POE switches that were part of that estimate too. That would still be the three-year. It's just the cameras and the NVR would be a five-year.
Okay, what kind of cost is this stuff for a three or a five?
It was a little over $2,800.
Do you have any time?
At the initial purchase is what I was, yep. It's actually something new that they started. It's always been a three-year warranty. This five-year optional is a new option.
Do you have a need to have it?
What's that?
Is there a need to have that?
It's been, we've had great luck with the equipment that we've had out there so far.
Is that full replacement?
Yes, yep.
What was the next, NDTC was a little bit, correct? What was the next closest bid? So we're all within our means. And the only difference between this bid and that bid was essentially that had a five-year standard warranty, I think, and this has a three. So for $2,800 bucks, we can get the five-year warranty and we're still well under the next five-year, or next lowest bid, excuse me.
Remind me, what was the admission on this? These are 4K, they're 4K.
Most of them are. There's a few of them in the hall, on the stairwells that were 4-megapixel, where 4K is approximately 8-megapixel, so.
So they're good cameras, that's?
Yep, yep.
Okay, further discussion, further questions? All right, seeing none, I guess what we would like to do?
I'll make a motion and you go ahead and go forward.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. You wanna just go to three-year or you wanna go to the five?
Let's just put the $2,800 away and let it grow, no?
Interest is gonna go negative pretty soon.
I think for $2,800 bucks, that's about it.
I think it's reasonable. Okay, was that okay to make that part of the motion? Okay, we're going by the five-year warranty. Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, we have to roll call or are you gonna, not to the paperwork?
Roll call.
Go roll, we're gonna be done with it.
Wakefield, Brett.
Aye.
Bolson, Brown.
Aye.
Light fun.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks for coming in.
Do you have a timeframe to this, to what you were thinking?
Tomorrow.
Gordon with Chris.
I'll give you a call tomorrow. I gotta set up a security meeting, a meeting.
Yeah, I mean?
We've got this nailed down.
ASAP, obviously, but as soon as we can comfortably do it off of what is all floating around.
I was just gonna say, you asked me two weeks ago and we could have it installed, we'd be about done by now. You ask me now, it's?
Yeah, and then we're gonna be willing to work. Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, very good, all right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call them all.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, next, Mr. Kornbeck on multi-hazard mitigation plan, KLJ.
Yes, sir. Thanks for coming up, appreciate it. That was a teller telling me talking about the same thing. Last night, we have just kicked off your project. These are just talking points for you, if you use as reference. There's, I think there's enough. So I talked with Chris and we said, oh, we'll do this in 10 minutes, so you get to start your timer. Just very briefly on that first page, what I'm showing you are what the key objectives of this plan are. FEMA requires that in order to maintain your eligibility as a local jurisdiction, whether you're a city or a county, that you have a plan that hits, that's within five years. So we're doing the update that we need to do to stay within that eligibility window. Since you've got a plan in the past, you know, many things you might think of as being just essentially the same, but it is an opportunity to reevaluate. You know, if there's something new that has hit the horizon as being an issue, this is the kind of really make sure that you're including mitigation actions in your planning process and making it eligible for funding. Because really, part of this is about maintaining your eligibility for pre and post-disaster federal funding. So with that in mind, I personally have three objectives. Number one, and these are the bottom three of the left-hand side, to meet the FEMA requirements. This is the Bible that we go by, that FEMA goes by and that the State Department of Emergency Services goes by to make sure we're meeting what we have to meet. There's a short version of that, which turns into about a five-page document that can set up questions like, does the plan document the planning process including how it was prepared and who was involved? Or does the plan include information on previous occurrences of hazard events and the probability of future events? So it's very specific and if DES at the state level doesn't see that your plan does that, they send it back. So our goal is to minimize what has to be corrected. I just finished the Lemoore County one and it took me about four hours to make the final corrections to it. So we get pretty good at it. I've done about eight of these and it's learning what really matters to FEMA. So of course, the bottom line is really to reduce the loss of life and property. We use a very templated process. We use a very templated process. If you look at the documents that I've done for each of those eight, uh, counties, what we have is something, you can see the same cable contents, many of the same kinds of maps show up every time, because we're using the same data sources and we're asking the same data questions in order to meet the guidelines that, that FEMA has laid out for us. And what you're seeing here is just the, the summary of what's in each of the chapters that we have in that template. If you go to the next page, I just wanna highlight the importance of each jurisdiction's involvement. So, uh, there have been cases in North Dakota where a jurisdiction has declined to be involved. If you're a municipality and you do not participate, basically, you are not eligible. And Chris, did you have a situation where any of ours are not?
I had one that was tough, but actually, they're on board now.
Excellent. So that's the first part of the process, getting the sign-up and the dotted line, saying, yes, we'll commit. But then it's after we have them on board technically, getting some participation from them. Some of these jurisdictions are very small, have very limited capacity to be involved in these planning processes. Uh, just in the Lamar County project, it got down to the eleven and a half hour for me to get one city to actually do something. I went out there one evening and actually, I was ready to knock on doors until I found somebody that was a commissioner, so I could talk to them, so that I could get something I could claim as participation. Fortunately, that city had a cafe open, and I found somebody in the cafe who was doing the talking. So I will make sure that you get what you need as individuals too. Uh, three things that you need to recognize. We need to have a designated person from each of these jurisdictions, and when it gets down to the, the action items that are what you're going to do, we have, we have to have at least one from every city, and from the county, and it's easy for the county, but, uh, despite that, we also have to consult broadly, which means we're gonna be thinking about economic development or other organizations that we wanna make sure we get input from as well. Next page just lists for you the fifteen hazards. These are based on the twenty-nineteen, uh, adopted vertical enhanced mitigation mission area operations plan. That is a model, it's the state level multi-hazard mitigation plan. So, the ones that I've highlighted in the, in the color are really the ones that most counties think of as being the key issues. You might find something in your jurisdiction that's different, uh, for instance, in western North Dakota, where I'm working on some now, how those materials are just as important as these other natural, um, hazard issues. Then go to the last page, process, I just wanna highlight some things. Just like our document has a very, um, straightforward templated process, uh, or, uh, a structure to it, and we just fill in the blanks with the stuff that relates to your county and your communities, um, the process we use is pretty much the same way. I have four different questionnaires or templates that are spreadsheets where I'm just looking to fill in the blanks. Now, this is the hard part, because it's back to working with the communities and the responding, um, entities, like the fire departments, that are especially important to have involvement, to get the information we need so that we can document, uh, recent events or capabilities. Those are usually the two hardest things to make sure we get ready, uh, from each of these jurisdictions or entities. And that way, we can make sure that, uh, we know what's needed, because the idea is, what can we do to enhance our preparedness and mitigate or limit the damage if we do have a hazard? So, what I'm showing you in the big bold points here, uh, public data updates, these are things my office just does. We can pull it from data sources that we have access to. Then the community data update are the things where we're gonna send out these spreadsheets, and especially now when we're looking at kind of lockdown on public, you know, face-to-face encounters, we'll try to do that as much as we can, uh, by, by survey or by, uh, questionnaires, and we send stuff out to the communities and ask for their help in getting that information back to us. Um, I'm highlighting their in-kind match, because the feds will pay for the cash part that allows us to do the work for you. But the in-kind match, which is a one-fourth of the total cost, the way they, they do the thinking on this, is supposed to be from what you as local citizens and organizations in the county contribute. So that means you have time, if you show up at a meeting, if you fill out a survey, if you answer a questionnaire or, or a spreadsheet, that kind of thing, we wanna make sure we document it so we can count towards your in-kind match. And then if you do it, go to a meeting, getting that mileage in any other expenses that you incur. So, uh, that's sometimes a challenge, uh, but if we, if we're diligent about it from the beginning, we can cover it. Then finally, just wanted to highlight a little bit stakeholder engagement, especially now when we're thinking about the impacts of the coronavirus. It's really important to recognize, we do have some alternatives. I've been very successful in using surveys in the past, uh, that can do, you know, maybe about one-fourth of your in-kind match need. If we get lots of emails and we stress the importance of using this as a primary tool, I think we can double it, make it half, half of your in-kind match. But it means people have to be willing to take ten minutes or so and fill out a survey. And the other thing that I expect we will end up doing more is just making sure that we use the phone well, and that I, I write very well-worded, uh, emails to make sure what's clear, uh, when I said I'll make, I'll request for information, or we're asking for feedback about what's important. So, I can ask, uh, you some questions if you want, or you can ask me some more quick, some questions, but Chris, maybe, is there something you want me to highlight?
Nothing in particular, well, nothing like crazy in particular. Our, our threat hazards are definitely changing, if things go disease control, it's starting to become priority one.
I've done many of those projects, of these projects in the western part of the state, and the district health, uh, capacity and organization in their past planning has been a really significant issue or benefit, depending on how it works for your particular jurisdiction. Uh, southwestern part of the state, great program out there, and they all, they basically say, we've got a five-inch binder here that tells us everything we need to do, if we just follow the steps. And, you know, depending on what your situation is, this is a unique occurrence right now, but still, a lot of that background material has already been thought through by, by the health, by the council. This is an example of, uh, the last plan we did for Tower, not the one that we are going to be doing for, but we did the one five years ago. It's got about a hundred and fifty pages in it, but one that you have right now has about two hundred and thirty or two hundred and twenty pages in it. What we try to do is make this as succinct as we can, because, you know what? Nobody has the time to start paging through a lot of paragraphs, so we use bullet, bullet points and graphics as much as we can, but we still have to meet that mandate of all these different checklisted items FEMA says you gotta have in here. Do you have any questions? I'd answer for you.
Questions?
Chris, do you have the figures again?
I, I wish I did, I-
I know what ours is, but I don't know what anybody else's.
Yeah, I, uh, you want me to, you want me to check? Actually, yeah, I can pull up.
I think it would be, I mean, our, my question is not for you necessarily, Bill, but timeline, do, do we need to make a decision today, or can we wait till the next meeting?
Those aren't due, due yet?
I thought you probably weren't gonna get the money till-
Thirty-four thousand.
Yeah, I have, only get the money till, till October now.
The other one was four.
It's whether or not you have to send anything in, so.
Right.
And I don't know.
I don't, right.
So we have a little bit of time.
The other one was twenty-two, two.
And that was the one that hasn't came in, was that?
Yep, that's, that didn't really need the specific.
Do you have any, any specific questions for Bill, I guess, and then we can discuss it all.
Just one question, how many of these have you done, other than Tower? How many other counties have you done? So many?
I said eight.
Eight, okay.
I should probably double-check, make sure it's not more than that, but-
Could you name some of the counties off the top of your head?
Uh, Adams County and Lamar County are the two most recent ones. And then I'm, and I said done, I mean, including working on, I'm working on four right now, in the western part of the state. Uh, and those are Dunn, Stark, Billings, and Golden Valley.
Good.
And then, uh, prior to that, I came in when my predecessor was, uh, just working on one of these, and did the Williams County one, finished the Williams County one. There were two other ones, uh, Mercer County and McLean County that we also did, that I just helped finish.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions for Bill?
Well, is, so is there any reason not to approve, just go and take it done right now?
No, no, I'm, I'm just asking-
I'll make the motion if we go ahead and, uh, use, you know, data, like, as a multi-hazard mitigation plan.
Okay, we have motion in a second. And, and if I'm correct, that they were the low bid, correct?
Um, that was the third one.
The third one was-
No, but I mean, they were lower than the other one that we weren't satisfied with on the data.
Yes.
They were the lower of the two that we had presented. Probably a better way to ask that.
Great.
Just double-checking, okay.
Daniel's, for that Nexus, is that?
Yep.
The other one?
Yep.
And that's the one that was preferred, wasn't it?
That came with, I'm just pulling it up right now. Yeah, that one came with high-
High recommendation from other counties, that?
Well, maybe talk to the other county that, uh, represented, uh, the convict, plus, plus, it's good files.
Yeah, uh, well, there's a motion in a second on the table, further discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I, if they're the low bid and they've, you know, done it a couple of times already, and I don't-
I've always been comfortable with the K L J, right?
Well, they're, they're not the low bid, um-
Well, I'm sorry, they're, they're the low bid of the three bits that, you know, the two that made it, right? Because last, last time, if I remember correctly, you know, our discussions with Chris, Chris, I mean, that, that one of the bids was sort of, that was, was that different?
The, the, the lowest bid did not come with any recommendation, so however, it's actually-
That's what, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and the other two bids both have quality recommendations.
So are you comfortable leaving that motion on the table?
Okay. Further discussion. Okay, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll, we'll call then, we'll call.
Brett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Light fun.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank, thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. If it's okay with everyone, uh, that first, technically, that emergency declaration shouldn't be under unfinished business, because we already did, that's something new, so I'm gonna put it up under this section, if that's okay with everyone. Excuse me. Crystal, you're just in time. Okay, I guess all, I can lead, and you guys can kind of chip in, uh. As everybody knows, this, this COVID-nineteen thing, as we've talked about already in this meeting, is moving very quickly. I had, uh, discussions with, came in with Nathan, uh, and Lucas had already talked to Nathan previously, and we were gonna have it on the agenda regardless. Today, uh, that was when we thought we had more time, and it's just rolled downhill like crazy. So, I apologize to anybody if, if we're moving maybe slower than they anticipate, but I, I wanted to make sure that if we're gonna do anything big like this, it had to come in front of the commission. Um, up to this point, uh, just to fill everybody in, um, we, we've done additional cleaning steps. Obviously, we're trying to do social distancing, which we're not doing very well right now, but we're gonna make some changes for commission meetings and stuff going forward, assuming this passes, about how we're gonna handle things going forward for the next certain amount of time. Uh, we had a department head meeting, uh, yesterday morning, uh, with all the department heads, uh, the only one that couldn't make it was the sheriff, and, uh, Ben came from the sheriff's office as a representative. Uh, we, we asked about, uh, we had multiple questions, at least from my perspective, and Fred was also able to make it as well. Um, discussing our capabilities to do work from home, uh, so we could, uh, remotely work our, our capabilities, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, what, what we can do and can't do in the courthouse and things like that. Uh, a lot of questions, and, and got a lot of feedback from the different department heads and stuff, so it's been, it was, it was beneficial. Uh, and then you've seen today, obviously, a wave of different cities and counties in the state are, are making determinations on what they're gonna do with their facilities. After sitting through a conference, or hearing what the court system did yesterday, where I was kind of waiting on the court system to make some determinations, obviously, because we had the court system in the courthouse, and then we had a, uh, Department of Human Services conference call this morning at ten o'clock, and, uh, that was, uh, I, what would determine, I would use eye-opening, uh, about what the state is doing and preparing, essentially, uh, assuming that, and I'm not trying to be alarmist, I'm just trying to be, uh, honest in what was said on the conference call, and preparing, uh, for, uh, essentially, it sounds like an inevitability of, of, of shutting things down more so than they are now. Uh, so I, I think we, we need to take some, I don't think we're necessarily being reactive, we need to take steps that are proactive, so at least we have a plan in place going forward, so we're at least a little more nimble than we have been in this past week, and can make some, make some changes. So, essentially, I, I sat down off of the, the things that I had heard from the different department heads, and in visiting with, uh, Chris and Crystal have kind of been our point, uh, point people, and, and all the different department heads and bringing stuff forward, and this is what I came up with. Uh, and, and this is just off of my thought process, this is off of what I've heard. This is all open to, uh, questions, uh, changes, concerns, additions, corrections, anything like that. Um, at this point in time, and, and I'll, I'll just kind of go through some of the bullet points on the recommendations I came up with, and, uh, and give you some rationale on some of them. Um, as we talked about previously, I'll just start at the, the top on the operational stuff. Courthouse, uh, and this would be all, if it's adopted, and we'll change it, obviously, if, if possibly, but, uh, effective, uh, tomorrow morning at, at opening of courthouse hours, so. Uh, the courthouse and other county facilities will remain functioning with employees, but will be locked down. Uh, the county is disturbing, discouraging any unnecessary in-person visits to county facilities, and instead suggests usage of the county's website, email, fax, and telephone calls. A lot of counties are already locking down, and they are, uh, a lot of the cities are locking down as well. No unnecessary traffic. Uh, some in-person visits that we, as we talked about, uh, will be unavoidable, unavoidable, particularly in court, social services, and I should have put public health as well. Therefore, access to the courthouse will be achieved, and this is one we can change, as we've talked about. I, I was thinking we would roll it through the self-doors and the protocol, but depends on how we're going to do it, if we're gonna do possibly by appointment, or if we're going to have somebody man the door, as we've talked about, or something like that, we can look at that as we go. Before we change the protocols, but basically, at this point, I have the protocols using the self-doors, any in-person's visits will have to be, uh, have to clear screening protocols. Uh, the screening protocols that I have mentioned in this, um, on the DHS meeting this morning, um, they were recommending, highly suggesting and recommending that we put in place screening protocols for all employees previous to them coming into the building too. Those screening protocols, we, I haven't seen yet, rounded, if you get an email yet, I'm s- Okay, well, and that's what got me on this screening protocol thing. I don't know how we would roll that out at this point in time, or how we would function it, but it was strongly recommended from DHS. Uh, so that is why I put it in there, I don't, and, and Chris has maybe some more information on it. The C D C has screening protocols essentially that they have recommended, I would assume that the DHS ones are gonna be somewhat similar. Um, did, did you, do you have any information on what those would entail?
Um, I actually got one from, um, Department of Corrections.
Okay.
And how their protocol is. Theirs is done a little bit differently, they actually have an E R, or a, I shouldn't say an E R, uh, they have a registered nurse or-
They have nursing staff.
A nurse staffing, um, because their regular employees aren't true nurses or doctors, so they're, they're basically the nurses going in, doing the temperature checks. If, first thing is temperature, and of course, then they start doing the questionnaires, um, or the questionnaires are the temperature checks to see if they may or may not be a risk, uh, of course. Uh, I, without saying too much, because there's some private stuff there, you know, they handle it differently if they, if they come in contact with, you know, maybe a really good possibility, and then they have lockdown procedures going forth. I don't know if that's a guideline or a stepping stone we wanna follow, um, but-
This is the D O C?
This is the D O C, it's correct.
Yep.
They're not taking any prisoners.
Right, but if someone does something that's crime today, they're gonna take a prisoner.
No.
Locally.
Locally.
Locally. And that's where I was, yeah, and I was gonna chip, and we do have Rob in the back of the room, so. No, sorry, sorry. And we do have Rob in the back of the room, so maybe you could inform us, what, what's the jail doing for their protocol, Chris?
So, I'll do it, yeah.
So what, what we're doing is, we, we've changed our screening process for intakes within the jail and the re-entry center, but we are also screening all of our, all of our staff at shift changes, so we're, we're temping them when they come in at shift change. The big thing for us was educating our staff to say, okay, here are the symptoms. If you're exhibiting any of these symptoms, you call us and let us know and don't come in. But then when they do come in, we're temping them to make sure that no one's running the fever, or has the cough, or has any of those symptoms, and then we're just documenting those. We haven't run into any cases or any concerns regarding it yet, but if we do have someone that is symptomatic, if it's staff, they're gonna be, we'll be notifying our medical and then seeing if we need to separate them and quarantine them on site, or if we can just send them home. More likely, that's what we would do.
And I would functionally guess the DHS's guidelines are gonna be something similar to that.
I, I do have guidelines for workers going out to visit homes if it's not an emergency and it's not as expensive as that, it's just like, has anyone in your home traveled outside the country, are you, is anyone in your home exhibiting fever, cough, shortness of breath? So it's just three questions, it's pretty basic, has, has the individual served up contact with anyone with a lab confirmed test of coronavirus? So just three questions.
Yeah, and I see this, excuse me, rolling out probably two different ways if we do adopt something like this. You would have the initial education process with our staff saying, okay, if any of these things happen within the next timeframe, you have to tell us right away. If you have come into contact with it, obviously, and we have those guidelines already that have been put out by Crystal to the department heads in terms of, you know, quarantines and things of such nature. But if, you know, if additionally, if you traveled someplace, or if you have, are still planning to go someplace, even if it's in state, you need to tell us, so that we know what's occurring. The only other thing would be, if it's a temperature thing, if we do want to check temperatures coming in and out of the building, and I understand that people might think that's going a little over and above, but I guess at the end of the day, what it comes down to is if all the federal facilities like the White House are doing it, it must be pretty doggone serious. So the thing that I come back to is the question of how do we functionally make it work? Is it gonna be on the department heads, is it gonna be when you come into the building, and I honestly don't have that question, I think that's something we'll have to work through with the department heads and everything, if it's something we do intend to implement. And then, I don't know what, we're gonna have to make some decisions tomorrow, because we're gonna do our social, our human, our zone, I always just call it, or I think, our zone board meeting, we're gonna have to make some determinations. The only reason I put this in was if, if we make that decision at the zone board that we're gonna do it, it only makes sense to me that we're gonna do it countywide, because half the people that work in this building are, at least a third of them are DHS, or are under those DHS American guidelines. So, that's why I put it in. So it's something we can discuss going forward too, but that's, that's why it's in there.
The zone board will be looking at us to decide what to do.
I believe so, yes, and like I said, it was highly recommended through that DHS protocol this morning in that meeting, that, and that it's something we should strongly look at just as an additional step to make sure we're not letting people in the building that aren't safe. And I don't think it's necessarily, yes.
If there's any department head meetings about this, can we please be invited from the third floor as well to the department head meetings, so we are aware for our staff?
Yes.
What's going on?
And I apologize if we missed you up to this point.
I, maybe I was, maybe I was, I don't know, but I didn't go.
No, I apologize. And we had Carrie there kind of informing us what the courts were doing, but that would obviously would be something we could push, and Crystal can make a note, because she's usually been the point or Chris of getting this stuff out to the different individuals in the courthouse, of course, thank you. So, that's, so that's screening protocols. Now, these are the ones going forward, and I'll kind of explain as I go, all events scheduled for the court house or memorial building will be suspended for the next 35 days. 35 days was put in there simply because that fits into the second commission meeting in April. That's why 35 is kind of a good number I put it up, because then it would give us guidelines until that second meeting in April. Everything I looked at, CDC guidelines and everything, they're basically saying nothing above 10, and by the day, it's dropping. So I'm just of the opinion, at least in my personal thought process, they're saying social distancing, social distancing, we shouldn't have anything in the courthouse if we don't possibly have to. Don't allow people the opportunity. So that's why 35 days. Meetings of county-appointed boards, committees, and commissions will be suspended for the next 35 days, with the exception of the Ramsey County Commission and all other boards which have legally mandated meetings. I pulled this directly from the City of Fargo, this is what they're doing, they have to have a planning zone board meeting, because that is legally mandated as well as the commission meetings. I, I'm not sure what we have to have legally mandated here, that's why I left it open and just put legally mandated. All county-sponsored travel for work-related purposes has been canceled. I believe we've already, already basically put that out in the guidelines that we're no longer supposed to be traveling, and the ability to work remotely will be implemented when possible. We have quite a few people in talking with Chris and Crystal after, before the meeting. Our department heads have done really well today in coming up with who can work remotely and who can't. So we're gonna have to, and that's one of the recommendations, and I don't know, how much, how much can I share from the DHS meeting this morning? Is that all open?
It was public, yeah.
Open, public? This is why, and I understand, again, we don't want to go overboard, but in the meeting this morning, DHS stated that the state IT is currently trying to figure out how they can send 7,500 state employees home, to work from home remotely. So, any steps we can take to get people out of the building and social distance, we just have to do. They're basically, at this point, they were talking about, even if you physically don't have a laptop, they are going to check out people's desktop computers, and they are going to allow people to take their desktops home, so they can work from home. So it's something we have to look at as well. And that's basically, in the next week or two, I'm hoping we can, and we have a lot of secure stuff that has to happen, we need VPN lines, we need to work with Steve IT as well as NRG to get those VPN lines and figure out what we can and cannot do, but that's gonna be a discretionary thing as we move forward. Quicker we can get people home, social distance, better off we are. And then, as I said here, county staff will coordinate with county IT, NRG, for social services to increase abilities to work remotely from home in order to increase social distancing abilities, as well as prepare for any additional closure action in the future. We don't know how this is gonna roll downstream, things might change rapidly, so we're gonna have to be prepared, the quicker we allow ourselves to be prepared to work from home, the better off we're gonna be. Any county staff members returning to work from personal travel are subject to stringent return to work criteria, and that's gonna be, you know, we'll have to work on that criteria. There'll be criteria through DHS on that as well, that we can, we can follow if we need to. The Ramsey County Emergency Manager will be the captain and point person for all county COVID-19 operations, any ongoing decisions will be made in concert with Ramsey County Commission Board Chair and Louis the Commission as a whole in between if we have to. I'm gonna try to bring everything we came to in a meeting of everybody as a whole, but if it's a nimble decision that has to be made, I'm hoping you guys are gonna be okay with me making a quick decision if we have to, and this is essentially in lieu of, if the government makes a decision, we're gonna shut down or something like that, then we're gonna have to make that call immediately, and I don't want to have to call an emergency meeting just to make one motion to shut the place. The Ramsey County Commission Board Chair shall be empowered to make operational sit decisions between meetings as needed, that's basically what I put that for, and again, we can make changes if this is necessary, if you want to call emergency meetings, we can. All increased cleaning and social distancing protocols previously enacted shall remain in place. Additional procedures will be developed for future Ramsey County Commission and other required meetings to ensure compliance with North Dakota Open Meeting laws and ensure safety for the general public and county employees and commissioners. The Attorney General's Office has put out guidelines for the open meeting requirements, in this extreme, you know, historic situation, essentially unprecedented. We will look at the possibility of, if we have to have people, your staff, in person to come to a meeting, maybe it'll be social distancing, one person in, one person out for a time, or whatever, or if we're gonna maybe try to do more tele, tele meetings, whatever, we're gonna have to adjust accordingly as we come forward, and I'll work with Andy and staff on how we're gonna do that, we're gonna try our best to make it work. Plus, how can we still allow public input, because it's still public behavior? So we'll work on that going forward with Steve as well, we're gonna try our best, we're gonna make, and if we have to, we'll keep the meetings open and we'll still allow people in, but we'll just have to really strictly do social distancing, we might have to move to a bigger room, things like that, to make sure that we ensure that. Then, down to, then the next employee-related round number two. All, all specific employee-related actions are subject to FMLA, ADA, and all other applicable employment law guidelines. I'm not a lawyer, but I tried to make it sound lawyerly. Simply because in the guidance we put out to department heads at this point, FMLA and ADA things are very important, so we have to make sure we still follow those rules, but we also have the ability to go over and above those basic guidelines of FMLA and ADA, and that's what I'm essentially attempting that we should look at. The county will make all possible attempts to allow high-risk employees to work from home immediately, we're gonna try to get people out of the building that are high-risk, even if we're gonna remain open just for their personal safety. Sick leave usage from banked hours, and these are ones that we should talk about, because I just put this in here, I want to know how everybody feels. Sick leave usage from banked hours will be waived for the next 35 days. All employees that feel they could possibly be ill are, I should probably have written required, but I put encouraged, to stay home from work. If you are sick, if you have anything, stay home. And I want to make sure, and that was one of the things that in the department head meeting was hammered home, we want to make sure that employees aren't concerned if they're going to be eating up their hours. We don't want to get them into that determinant stage where they say, well, I need to come to work, because I need to get paid. So we want to make sure if you're sick, you stay home. Employees that lack childcare due to school closings and daycare closings, which we haven't seen any yet, I don't believe that is a possibility in the future, though unfortunately. That's kind of been a case-by-case basis up to this point, are encouraged to stay home with their children if necessary. And I don't know if my terminology here is right, but all annual leave usage will be waived for the next 35 days, I put, I don't know if that's the right terminology, but that's what I wrote down. And then finally, all previous guidelines on illness procedures as laid out in communications with department heads will continue to apply. So, everything that we've talked about, when it comes down to quarantining, if somebody is sick at work, what are we gonna do, and all those guidelines that we put out to department heads on Monday morning will continue to be applicable until further notice. For at least the next 35 days. So I just took you with a ton of stuff. If you made some notes and you have questions, let's, let's talk about the notes that you have on those questions. And again, this is just what I came up with, if we have anything additionally we think we should add, or any changes we think we should make, functionally for a certain department, we have some department heads here, or functionally for the courthouse as a whole, this is the time we need to kind of knock out, I think.
Part-time employees or people, employees that are on probationary status because they're new hires?
For sick leave and annual leave?
Right.
Everybody.
Okay.
I don't think it's a question, that, and those people are probably the most important.
Right.
Because if they, if they have to come to work to get part-time pay and they're not feeling well, we don't want them in the building.
Yeah.
We want them to stay home. This is gonna financially maybe cost us a little bit of money as a county, but I think it's prudent to do it, simply because we, we, and that's the one thing, another thing that it comes back to, the guidelines of allowing the chair, as long with Chris, to make a determination. We talked in our meeting, and Crystal and Chris can chime in whenever you, if I'm wrong, or if you want to add something, talking about, this is kind of a level-one step. The level-two step is, what happens when we have somebody in the courthouse that we either has been in contact with somebody that is sick, or comes to work without knowing and has, has been, should have been quarantined? And that step is gonna have to be, obviously, the question of, are we just gonna have to shut down, because the minute that somebody comes in that was sick, or was around somebody that was sick, we have to quarantine, those people should self-quarantine, follow them. And, again, not trying to get all crazy, but it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. It's gonna come here eventually, if you look at all of the tracking in Italy and all the other countries, it's gonna come here eventually, if it, in all honesty, isn't here already, and we just don't know what.
Well, it's, I mean, there's no.
We just haven't seen a positive yet.
Well, there's been a.
No, but I mean, in Devil's Lake so far, but it's, it's going to be in our community at some point in time, so we have to be prepared for that.
So one of, one of the immediate things that I think might be worth discussing is flow of employees from space to space within the courthouse. I think it might be valuable to include language in here that's essentially restricted access to other people's offices, because if you do have an outbreak, you know, you don't, you don't want the whole first floor to get sick, because everybody's going from office to office, talking to each other. I mean, not that you want anybody to get sick, but if.
No. Yeah, yeah, we could put, then, again, I think that, and I don't have a problem putting additional language in for that, it comes, kind of comes back to the phone call thing. If you can make a phone call from one office to the other office, make the phone call, don't go do in-person contact, and that comes down again to the social distancing guidelines that we put out with the department heads on Monday morning. But I think we can reasonably put another bullet point on that, if that's, if that's something we're looking for, under operational.
Carrie?
Sorry?
Go ahead.
No, 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 you're fine.
Oh, go ahead.
You got another?
Go ahead.
Has a question there.
Carrie, court proceedings, when's the next one, I heard April 4th.
Um, no, Becky, Phil, three in China, there's an administrative order that Supreme Court put out, it's an emergency order.
I'm sorry, I should have let you guys talk on specifics on those.
I calculated up, I didn't bring the court calendar down with me, but I went online, and for the next two weeks, we currently have about 90 hearings scheduled. That will not include people who were arrested and have to be put in jail and cannot be given a PR bond. Most of these hearings are scheduled here at the courthouse, very, few of them are currently scheduled at the law enforcement center. I don't anticipate many of these going away, but we do have, through the administrative order, if people are not feeling good, they're supposed to contact, whether they're the victim, the defendant, the plaintiff, any party involved is supposed, if they're not feeling good, to contact us, or Carrie, if she's requesting maybe there, or another attorney, and not show up. It's also suggested highly that they do all their payments online and not come to the courthouse directly to pay them to us, or, you know, by calling us. This is very strict for that, but it's also very important that we do continue business as usual, because of the legalities where people don't have their day in court. It's not.
It's constitutional, which is that are.
It has to happen.
Supreme Court put a blanket order kind of halting any jury trials that have been scheduled through April 24th, they gave presiding judges some authority to make decisions on bench trials, encouraging continuances at all stages of proceedings if it's necessary by parties, and then locally, we put some steps into place yesterday as it relates to bond schedules, jail things. Kind of in an effort to minimize as much contact with the different systems as we can without jeopardizing public safety.
And it's been discussed how to keep less than 10 people in the courtroom at a time by filtering people in and out in holding areas for few people, and we're, we're gonna work on that as an ongoing thing as we.
As the hour changes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we've been discussing that as well, how to keep the numbers limited, working around that.
Yeah, but like you said.
We'll be working with Rob at the LEC on that. You don't know that yet, but we will.
Yeah.
And like you said, though, operationally, there's constitutional guidelines and things like that, we still have to follow, and I mean, let's not get ourselves, crime isn't gonna quit in the meantime. There's still gonna be people that are gonna be.
You know, you get people at home and.
Crimes aren't gonna quit.
No.
Well, definitely.
No.
You have that.
So, so we're gonna have to have, you know, standards in place, and I think that's basically what we're attempting to do here. The court system is doing as best they can to, like you said, push off as much as they can through that April 24th, which is essentially pretty close to what we're doing with the 35 days. But there are still gonna be proceedings that are gonna have to occur between now and then.
Yes. As much as possible, we're putting our initial appearances four to six weeks out, we're not scheduling next week.
Yeah.
We're gonna.
So this is gonna be an ongoing thing, we're gonna have to work with people and, and operationally might have to make some tweaks and things like that as we move forward, but, you know, that's the basic I left behind.
Just, I got the question right in here, any employees that aren't coming to work now that don't have childcare? Rhonda, do you have any?
We have two. Two in Willett County that it's day by day, one was not there. Today, they found someone, not sure about tomorrow, we're looking at coming in at night, this will change that, we don't have the ability to get VPN, IT is overwhelmed. They were overwhelmed three months ago, and now they're really overwhelmed, so I, I don't think we'll get VPN so they can work at home, we're gonna try to do some night things.
Yeah.
This employee can't take the job home, or they can't work from home?
No, they, we don't have a VPN, they, they don't have secure networks, they just can't.
Yeah, and all of our eligibility workers and everything have to have secure networks with like double credentials is what the VPN is, correct? And, and you have to have a secure line to do that at home, and you have to have that on your computer, and we're just not set up to do some of that stuff right now.
Andy, do you have any other people in the courthouse that should work from home?
I.
Have the technology, you know?
My deputy will be working from home, starting tomorrow. So I will be the only one coming to the courthouse. I have enough out for her to do.
We're having a staff meeting tomorrow, because we have some that could do work from home.
Yeah, and I didn't put it in here, it's kind of department by department, Sarah, do you have something to add?
The extension office, we all have computers, I just got a Zoom account to hold some of my things on, you know, online to still have some of those things, so we can come periodically here, but we don't, we do not need to.
And I post for your whole staff, right?
Yes. Bill, Mars, I mean, I.
And, and we're gonna have to work to department, and this is gonna be a department-by-department thing too, we're gonna have to work through, see if a department isn't gonna be there at all. Forwarding phone lines if we can, dependent upon, so we'll have to work with a telephone company and things like that, if there's things like that that are gonna have to happen, I don't know what our capabilities are right now on that. If there's things like that that are going to have to happen, I don't know what our capabilities are right now on that.
No, they, we were actually testing that.
Okay, doesn't work very well.
We were doing a little test run with, they can actually call in to their phone line.
And then just leave like a cell phone number.
To their voicemails.
But we can change all incoming voicemails to say, we are working remotely currently.
Yeah.
Give my home phone number a call or my cell phone number and you'll be able to.
Because I think it's going to take a little bit of work if they think that they're going to forward with per se. I think it's something with the phone company that they have to do to have a phone line to be able to forward to a cell phone.
I won't say direct, I won't say directly because I'm not a hundred percent sure.
It's nothing like a second phone line was needed type of thing, it was one of those discussions, but.
No.
Yeah, they can do it for a while, but they can't do it to death.
Yeah, so the easiest way to know it is everybody in.
We do that now with our, we do that now with our.
My shop was just the other day, the line was down.
Yeah, it forwards to a cell phone.
So you order it as a cell phone. Yeah, and I mean, everybody in the courthouse on our system has incoming voicemail and stuff. So we can, we can just put incoming voicemail messages that'll say, call the home phone or the cell phone if we're going to have all people out of the office. So, and that's some of the, of what Crystal and Chris have told me. A lot of the regular, a lot of the departments can do a lot of their work remotely as best we can. So it's going to be a case by case basis, working on the department head and they'll work to the, work with the, talk to the portfolio holder and then that can run up to me as well. So, and through Chris. So we're just going to have to do it case by case, but at least in my opinion, the best case scenario is trying to get as many people at home social distancing as we can at this moment in time and ramp up so we have that capability more within the next couple of weeks. So we can get people out of the building. That's the goal. So, any other further discussion you guys are talking about? Okay, you got questions? I mean, again, additions, corrections.
One question I want to ask.
Chris has something too. We'll let Ed go first.
You think it's necessary to have somebody at the door? What do you think? Do you think you've got clients that need to come in and into the building and what do you think?
Just my personal opinion, I think it would be very difficult to staff. I think you'd have to almost have a medical person that was prepared to take all those precautions. Stay six feet away, I don't know how we'd staff it. I do have a, probably three to five percent of our people, citizens that we serve do not have a cell phone. So they're going to pound, I suppose, until someone says, what do you want? And then I guess we can leave pieces of papers up, you know, can you write us a note? We're going to have to probably let them in. We had a gentleman, the homeless shelter shut down today. We had a gentleman that does not have a cell phone and is homeless. He, you know, I don't know, he would probably just pound, I suppose, until someone came out and let him in because he would not be able to call. Could we have, I don't know, I think I'd have to think about that a while, but I don't know that we could, I don't know how we could staff the front. I don't know how that would work. That, I can't think of a scenario how we could do that.
I don't know if you're going to find someone that would want to expose themselves to what is going on.
Can I offer again? This is the second time. But so I've got, I've got two thoughts on all of that though. And then the first one is, is that yes, I think if we go fully by appointment only, we're going to end up turning people away who might have a pressing need and no other way to contact us. But my second thought is, might it be better if, again, if we're trying to limit staff from moving through the courthouse from room to room to room? Might it not be better if essentially there was somebody at the door who could guide the people that were coming to wherever it was that they were going? You know, that you just, you just take them to that room and I don't know. I mean, I'm not trying to argue that it's better, I'm just trying to come up with a good working solution here.
Okay, I'm spitballing here, this is completely. Yeah, is it, is it possible to string up a temporary phone line? Put it out in the entrance in between on the south entrance so that there would be a phone for people capably to call into the specific department? And then that department would then walk the person in?
That's exactly what I was going to say, because then we're not having a person getting.
Yes, so we'll still stress that we would love people to call beforehand so we can try to handle things over phone as best we can, so people don't even come. By appointment as much as possible, where we can still provide that option, stringing a phone line out so people can call in when they get here so we don't have to rely on the problem of people having cell phones and things of such nature.
I think that's, I think that's a pretty good solution.
I don't want to decorate fish, I mean, it's a very small percentage of people that that would be.
No, but at the same time, we want to make sure, I mean, those might be some of the people that might be most affected by this situation. So we want to make sure that we provide them the opportunity to get ahold of us. So, I mean, and we've got phone line capabilities, I mean, we can go buy a hundred feet of phone line and stretch it on and figure it out quickly with the phone company if we have to and put it out in that entryway.
Secondary question on that, is it something that we can make like speaker phone only? Because otherwise you're potentially having all the members in public putting that.
Just going to say that who's going to clean the phone after.
Three each use.
Well, I understand that, but we're going to have to try to figure out something. We're never going to, we're never going to provide the perfect situation.
I know.
I mean, there's just no way we're going to provide the perfect situation. All we can do is, Roger's cleaning everything. He can periodically go out there and wipe the phone down and wipe, he's going to wipe the handles down anyway. We'll try our best. That or if it's, if it's, that or if it's the department that that person called up to, we'll leave alcohol swabs and everything right there in that department where they walk the person upstairs, wipe the phone down.
They're going to steal it.
Yeah, I would think that maybe, leave it out there, that'll be gone immediately.
No, but we can put those inside the door, right? So they're not stealing, won't get grabbed one, you go out and say, distance, wipe the phone down, come on in. I thought you meant they'd steal the phone. No. You know what, if they do that, we'll go down to Walmart and go buy another phone for twenty-five minutes.
Or they're going to steal it?
No, they'd wipe, they'd steal, they'd steal the wipes and stuff. So we'll keep those inside the door and we can wipe the phone down between each usage when somebody calls upstairs. The whole point is, is I'm hoping that we can get to the point that, and I'm going to stress this tomorrow morning on the radio too. Call if you have business to do in the courthouse. We can instruct you the best ways we can do it electronically so you don't have to come in. If you do physically have to come in, make an appointment so we can not restrict, but try to slow the number of, as many people coming to the door down as is possible. And then we can, hopefully that'll slow to a trickle so we can control it.
So is, you know, this screening for all employees, is that going to be your purview? Are you going to be here in the morning and screen everybody?
And I have to ask that, I.
I think it's going to be department heads. Department heads are going to have to be responsible to make sure that their employees, before they start working that day are checked out. If we're going to do it. We can pull that portion of it if that's something we don't think is something we can do, well, or possibly. But my thought was the department head is going to have to be in charge of it.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's no way we can have one person screening seventy people coming in and out of the courthouse that are employees that day. When you report, when you report to work at wherever your work is, if we're going to do like temps or something like that, we'll have to bike, you have thermometers. You do your temp. We'll have some type of, we're going to figure out how to do this, healthcare wise for HIPAA and all those kind of things. But you'll write your temp down, you'll make sure, and it's going to have to be self-reported essentially by that employee. The department head will make sure that everybody that morning is done. And then that'll be it. Then if we're going to do it for people coming in, we'll have the same setup coming into the building. Where some of you have to check temperature, what was your temperature, write it down. No, I'm not saying this is going to perfectly work, that's why I wanted to have that discussion portion of it. Because I'm not saying it's going to work perfectly, but I'm saying it's an additional step to make sure that we're making sure people that are sick aren't coming in this building and making our employees sick.
So to be the devil's advocate, public health is a political subdivision, I've ran into this before. If they're not doing that, just that protocol that you just said, it's not going to matter because they have a second, I mean, I just think we all need to be on the same page. Are they going to be directed to do that?
But that's why I wanted to put it in because DHS is essentially strongly recommending we do it. And we've got forty percent of our employees plus are possibly going to be under that protocol. So it makes sense to me that we do the same thing courthouse-wide. I can't force people to do this other than, you know what, at the end of the day, if we put this down and this is, this is what we're doing. And if they don't like it, we'll figure it out.
I totally agree with it.
I mean, sorry, but we're not going to make some, I'm not going to make friends in this necessarily and that's okay. They can yell at me all they want. I'll be the bad guy.
Can I, Rob, I hate to put you in a spot, can I ask you, how's it been doing for you?
It's been good so far as far as the testing, you know, the big thing again is educating everyone as far as why you're taking these precautions, what you're doing. Everyone's been very open to doing it. Good luck in finding thermometers.
I know, and I've thought about that as well. And if it's something we can't functionally make work, then we just, we will put it in and if it's functionally we can't make it work, I'll make the call that we're going to waive it until we can figure out how to make it work.
Or at least doing the questions, at least getting.
Yes, at least ask the questions. I mean, and all of our employees, once we educate them that these are the questions we need to have answered. Once you ask them that first time, then they're going to quickly be able to tell you, you know, and we should put up, you know, posters on the questions we're going to ask, you know, have you had contact with the person, whatever. So every time they come in the building, they think, okay, I need to report if something occurred. I mean, something like have you traveled outside the country in the last fourteen days? So if you haven't, it's going to be one time that you're going to ask that question.
We had a May second delivery date on thermometers for.
Oh, May, well, hey, that's going to work well.
We've changed our questions to just any travel. I mean, so if you've been outside of your home region for any reason, we just, we want to know.
So, I'll get to, but so maybe the best way to do this is if we do want to do a screening protocol, we have Chris work with, work with Rob, get what the jail is using and we can kind of structure it accordingly for the courthouse along with DHS when they come with their guidelines, make something functional out of work and we'll make a call on how we can make it work dependent on resources.
I would defer to.
That's what gave it the.
So, so two questions that I have. First one is, let's say, you know, we do strictly by appointment only, right? Do you then outright refuse somebody if they say they've been traveling to an appointment? Is that, is that the intention?
Yes. No, I wouldn't say strictly that you're outright going to refuse them, but then we can make accommodations if need be. If it's something that needs to be an in-person thing, you know, there's going to be certain things like we can accommodate through telephone, through things like that, hopefully. We'll try everything we do to accommodate. But then we're going to have to do that on a case by case basis and that's why I put it in here. The necessity of an in-person visit is at the discretion of the department head in question. They'll have to make that, because I'm not going to be in the building all day, every day.
So then, so then isn't the intention that we go fully appointment only? Because then the next question that I have is, okay, so somebody comes and pounds on the door and somebody finally goes and opens the door for them and asks them the questions, and if any of them are yes, what do we do, shut the door on them?
No, at this point in time, at that point in time, if we have telephone, like I said, like what I'm saying is telephone procedure, then they can, those questions are going to be asked previous to them coming in the building. And then we can say, okay, what is your property, are you yes to any of those questions? Okay, you are. We would prefer if we could do this over the phone or through some other electronic means.
That's fine.
And if not, if it's something where they have to provide documents or something like that, you know what? Is there any way you can drop them in the mail and they can be here in two days or whatever? We're going to try our best to accommodate, yes. Candy, are we going to blow another hole in my theory here?
No, I mean, I'm listening to everything and a majority of people, not, maybe not elderly, but a majority of people have a smartphone. They have, I mean, if they feel that they need to do a one-on-one, you can always, I mean, can they call that employee's cell phone and do FaceTime?
Yes, not for passports, not for marriage license.
I know, I mean, I know that there's certain things that it's going to have to be a one-on-one that.
But one, just one person, one sick person has to walk through that door.
And they might not even know they're sick.
And then you have the person who wants it no matter what, and they're going to tell you the answer to your question, whatever you want to hear. And they could come in sniffing and coughing, and then what do you do when they're standing there in front of you?
Ten feet.
No, and that's why, again, I come back, I come back to the discretion of the department head. And if we say we're essentially going by appointment only, you know, we're going to try to get to by appointment only essentially. But you can do a marriage license, you can back and forth it through the mail, couldn't you, if you had to?
No, we have to witness them sign that application, so there's no fraud.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it's. Yeah, that's a good point.
It's all a fraud issue with marriage license and passport.
Well, again, then I.
I think if you handed it through the door and signed it, couldn't you?
I have to see them sign it.
I mean, and that's maybe an accommodation where they could, if they can't answer yes to all those questions, you stand inside the door of the court, you watch and sign it, they hand it through again and so they're slipping under, you stamp it and it goes back. I'm just saying, we're going to have to be, we're going to have to roll on as we go here. It's not going to be perfect.
Or have them come in as far as right at the front door, that's the only further they can go. They can't come into your office, they can't come into, we'll have a table set up there.
Yeah.
But once I expose diamonds, and I'm still up here.
I know, but.
I mean, I really, other than, and I did tell you this.
Yes.
Lock it down, lock it down.
I, I know, but we can't, we can't constitutionally lock it down, lock it down with the court system and social services and public health and.
But everybody else you could.
We could, but I mean, you said once in the building, they're in the building. How are we, other than?
Well, I can shut my door.
And that'd be fine, and that's why, again.
Although I do still have to go see Candy.
Yeah, again, well, you can.
Then you could walk a piece of paper over, slip it under the door.
Again.
I mean, you know, we've already put that distance between our office and your office because of beds.
Okay, yeah, and that's what I was going to say, let's back down.
Move back up here a little bit. I wonder, does anybody know what the other counties in the state are doing for sure?
Yes.
A lot of them are acting today.
Yes, Pembina County locked down, Walsh County locked down, Trail County locked down.
Okay, what are they doing there? Totally locked down, nobody's coming to work?
No, they're coming to work and they're locking the doors and it's all by appointment only, which is essentially what we're attempting to do here. And that's, again, these aren't supposed to be all-inclusive. That's why I want the department head and the elected official to still have that ability to say, this is what's best for my office. There's certain circumstances that none of us up here, even though we have a broad knowledge, we don't have intimate knowledge of how specific things happen in your office sometimes, you can make those decisions. And you do what's right for your office and just give me, fill me in, you know, figure it out from there.
Well, I mean, I think, I think we're going to have to basically, you know, be as stringent as possible.
So you want to basically say locked down, by appointment only then?
Yeah, I mean, I personally think because of the fact that every other version of this seems to have a plethora of opinions of how you would do it and what the right way to do it is. I think the best way to do it, it's my say, by appointment only and the department heads that, you know, can have a legally grounded right to refuse, have an appointment, can.
And that's fine. I wrote this before the other counties were starting to take action, to be honest. So I was just trying to draft something that would work for us. Do we still want to do something where there is the possibility where somebody can call up? Or are we just going to say you either by appointment or you're not?
I think we would have to have somebody have the ability to call up because it's not just criminal hearings we're having, it's mental health hearings. It's immediate hearings within twenty-four hours, forty-eight hour type of hearings, we have to have the ability to call it.
And I think, yeah, I think leaving the phone out there, I mean, why can't a person schedule an appointment using that phone if they have to?
That's what I'm saying, that's my.
Right, so, so I don't think that that breaks your by appointment only.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, we are public servants, there's some risk in doing our jobs, we need to mitigate it. We could talk for days about what about this, pieces of paper under doors, do this, do that. It's not about, it's about you, but it's also about protecting the public and we're public servants. I think this is a, I mean, I think we need to make some decisions and make it work and go from there. Sorry, I just think we could talk about this for days.
No, and that's, and that's why, again, I don't want to micromanage our department heads. I want to let them make, I mean, I want to give us, these are general guidelines on saying, this is how we want to do business. You have the parameters to be able to change how your department works within those structures.
But that phone's a good idea.
And then, so, so we're still going to do then, basically we'll say, some in-person visits unavoidable. We'll do through the south corridor doors of the courthouse, between the courthouse and Memorial Building. The screening thing, we'll leave, if that's okay, we can leave that in and then Chris and I will work along with Rob on those screening things and we'll see what we can make work. At the very least, we'll have a question, we'll ask the questions of the people before they're going to come in the building. If we can, we'll try to find, drive a nine gauge or something and buy some. I'm supposed to be so busy discussing. Probably not, probably not, after this meeting is done, I'm not leaving home for two weeks. Because I could, I have children at home and we're just going to, I'm going to be trying to learn how to be a fourth, first and preschool teacher. Yeah, so, so then we can basically, I don't think we need to make an additional line on here to say we're going to provide a phone. And that's just something we've discussed here and it'll just be part of the motion then, if that's mine. So do we have any other discussion or comments on how, what we have in front of us?
So, okay, so we'll formally say we're by appointment only, is that?
By appointment only, and I guess. By appointment only, uh, and I guess I don't have that written in here, but essentially, we're saying we're gonna lock it down, and you have to call in before you're gonna come, but we can put in by appointment only and then provide the phone still as.
Okay, Candy, you're gonna ask the three questions then of the person that calls in? I mean, and what's your three questions? You get out of the country, and then what, do you have a fever?
Rob will tell them.
Yeah, so have you traveled in the last twenty-one days? Uh, do you have a fever, you have a cough, or any issues with breathing?
Those are the questions.
Well, I think that's any department they call in.
Yeah, yeah, that's just gonna be standard protocol, that if somebody wants to come in the building, whether it's by appointment or if they just happen to show up and wanna use that phone, which are questions that you can answer.
And it's gonna take it, probably some time to get that phone out there. And then we have to re-educate everybody that the front doors are no longer.
Well, we can put signs on those front doors to say that you have to use the self-protocol doors.
Ray Roger, put some signs up, so they gotta use that south door.
I'm calling it a protocol, it's probably, I don't know what they. That's that's.
Okay, what sounds good, move to approve.
No, well, just a second, we got still a couple of questions before we go.
What about the Memorial Building memory?
Shut down.
Shut down.
So they can get into that back breezeway, so to speak, but they can't go through into the Memorial Building?
No, we should lock that down.
Okay.
We have to lock that down simply because we got North Central Planning down there, and they gotta be locked down. And then we're gonna have to have a similar thing where that phone line will be, you know, blocked, have North Central Planning's number on there too. And then they'll have to call North Central Planning, make an appointment, or love to call to go into them as well. They're gonna be included in this as well as, and I understand this is gonna be a pain for a while, but I just think it's something we're just gonna have to do. Do you have any other question?
Yeah, just, just for, I don't know, or it says all county staff members returning to work for personal travel or something, it's just gonna be. How far is the personal travel gonna be considered, like Fargo or Grand Forks or?
Good question.
That's a good question.
Probably eliminate a lot of people in Devil's Lake from last week.
Yeah, I'm one of them.
I mean, I'd probably say out of state, somewhere.
I was a lot in one.
Well, that's gonna happen, I mean.
No, and that's a good point, I mean, may, may, I don't know if we need to put guidelines, or maybe we can just pull that and ask those questions. I mean, Rob, how was the jail handling it, any travel out of Devil's Lake?
So we're, we're just now having those discussions on what we need to narrow it down to. You know, we've, we've been to out of state at this point.
Yeah, I I think that would be a good place to start.
Now, now, we're, you know, we're looking like we probably need to narrow it, narrow it down to like your home region. You know, what you would, you know, figure as your home region.
Okay.
I was, Trail and are telling um citizens to please only in central, central travel, but subject to disciplinary action, our employees who travel outside of the region, they're like very serious. I don't have a copy of it yet, but they're.
I, yeah, I know, and it depends on what you define as region, but that'll have to come down.
Trail County, you mean, Rhonda, or what'd you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, Trail and, it sounds like Trail and Steel.
So if they travel Fargo, Grand Forks, we're gonna call that out of the region then?
I don't know, I haven't seen that.
You would guess?
I would guess, I don't know, I keep asking for a copy of it.
The travel, so it have to be my fault.
Yes.
I mean, for now, I'd say if you're gonna keep it in there, just say out of state. I mean, and you can make it more stringent, I can't.
That's fine. You know, from out-of-state personal travel then.
Right.
So we, we have personal travel, is there any here somewhere?
Uh, under both.
It's up to the N I T and the H R.
Eight. And this is something we've been essentially adhering to already, it's just we have never defined what personal travel is, the scope of how far out we're going. So right now, the way I would have been making a change, we're reading, any county staff members returning to work from out-of-state personal travel are subject to stranger return-to-work criteria to protect other staff members and the public. The whole point of it is, is that if we're gonna waive annual leave and sick leave stuff, if you went out someplace where you could've got sick, we want you to stay home. It's just that simple. And we're gonna make sure that we make you home, and we're gonna make sure that you keep your insurance. I mean, we're gonna try our best, that's all we can do at this point. And we're gonna have to have our employees back, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough to, we won't do this for a while, but we just have to work on it.
And that's another question, if we're waiving uh sick time and vacation time, and they're going home, then then they shouldn't be going out to the bars or to the Walarts or anything like that either, right?
No, they should go home and stay home, but I mean, I, we can't personally force people what to do and what not to do when they go home.
Yeah, I mean, I think like after hours, what about like during working hours, let's say? I mean, it's just thinking outside the box, what if they went to the bar?
So if they're supposed to be working from home, and they're.
They should go to a bar during working hours anytime.
Well, they're not working from home.
They're not working from home, they're just home.
Yes.
We can't, we we, that 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 comes down to personal responsibility.
Realistically, now somebody calls them sick, we're not checking to see if they're.
All, all we can do is educate them and tell them, please, 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 for your, your employee, for your coworkers, for the other people that work in the county, for the other people in the community, go home and stay home. Yeah. And in all honesty, I'm not, again, not trying to go crazy, but at some point in time, you're seeing how it's rolling through the East Coast right now. There's a possibility in the future, I don't know how long it'll be, but there's a possibility that might happen, I mean, they already shut everything down in Minnesota. It it might not be long before that happens here. So all we can do is just stress personal responsibility and and please, for the, for the sake of everybody that works here, try to just make good decisions.
Yeah, and I mean, I I would just add to that, right? I mean, when you're an employee of the county, you're representing the county, if 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 they're the kind of person that has the values that would take them to the bar in the middle of the workday, you know, you agree with that?
Like if you had frozen something or something.
Well, right, but I'm just, I'm basically just making the point that likely they weren't the right people to be working for the county to begin with, right?
Well, at the end of the day, what it comes down to too is that we will wanna make sure that people still try to do as much business legally as they can, cuz this is gonna be really tough on our local businesses too. So everybody's gonna just have to try to adjust them in order for a while, and we're gonna work with it, that's just what it comes down to.
No, I know that, I know that. Hey, I'm gonna reiterate my motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, we've discussed a lot, but I'm gonna allow the question of approval discussion. There are additions, corrections, anything that needs to go on there.
So what exactly is the motion?
Sorry, to, to approve, everything is recommended and amended.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll go back to the motion then. The motion would be to approve the guidelines and the recommendations as appointed or as 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 given. We're going to make slight changes to say by appointment.
Yep.
We're gonna make a change to personal travel is out-of-state personal travel at this point in time. And then with the recommendation, we're gonna try to get a phone and all that stuff put up. Staff have the, now have the guidance to say we need to get some phone lists and stuff like that to put on the doors, and we'll, we'll just have to do it as as prudently and as quickly as we can within reason.
Keep kidding me.
And staff has final say, technically.
The department heads have final say on their department.
So so Katie would have.
Exactly.
Yep.
No, I'm not coming out there.
Yes, exactly, and and as long as you can do it within legal.
Legal, yes, right, yes.
And and I want, like I said, I wanna leave it within the department heads' auction, but we're just basically setting the parameters for the building, trying to, and then say work with them.
And and and, you know, the only other thing I'd add to that is if you're leaving it up to the department heads, I think that the department heads should try to keep any of the staff that they do have on hand and themselves in their offices, so not to co-mingle. Because, because the thing is, is let's say, I mean, let's say, let's say Candy was very happy to take any appointments, right? And 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 you're not so happy to take any appointments. If if Candy gets sick and you get sick because you're talking to each other, well, it wasn't your fault, right? So I'm just saying that, you know, in in as much as we can keep everybody in their own.
I know.
Well, at the point I'm sick, my office will have to close.
Right.
So then there won't be any services.
But so.
If somebody gets sick, is in the building.
If somebody gets sick at that point in time, we're essentially gonna have to shut them out. I don't know how we're gonna do it, but that's another discussion for another day, let's put this into place, let's do our best.
What about if your staff doesn't have an office and they are in every office?
The only other thing I would say for you, Roger.
How can we solve that? How can we solve it? That's a good, and that's why I asked that question.
The only, the only thing I would say, Roger, is.
I know where there's some hazmat suits down in the basement.
Is, is, and one thing I didn't put in here is, is, is saying that if we can, we can stay to our work schedules too. I'm not saying we don't want you in the building, but if you need to clean, you know, or if you have a staff member, maybe we can stay to our schedules as best we can, so you clean all the touch points out in the hallways and the main things. The departments take care of their rooms as best they can. And then we have a staff member that comes in and bang, does the garages and everything that has to flow inside the offices. We're just gonna have to figure out how to do it as best we can going forward. I understand that, you know, you're, you're just gonna have to work with your.
With as much social distancing as possible.
Yes, as much as we possibly can. I mean, and like I said, this is gonna be a moving target, I wanna leave it in your hands to figure out what's the best way to keep the staff in the building and your staff safe.
It's not gonna be perfect, but it's gonna have to work.
No, and we're gonna have some bugs and some wrinkles, we're gonna have to work on as we go. We're gonna have some, we're gonna have some stuff we're gonna have to work out as we go, and and we'll have to figure it out, but, you know, may, maybe we can, if if you have somebody that you have staff during the day that does those normal things, maybe we can say we'll give you uh, within the guidelines we can use, maybe we can give them overtime pay to come in overnight or something, if that's something, so we can keep those offices from people coming in and out, we'll work at it, work on it as we come. It's just gonna be a case-by-case basis, and that's why we have Chris running up to me to ask questions, and then we'll try to figure it out. We're just trying to make ourselves as flexible as possible, and then just work on it as we can. I'm not, I'm not saying I'm gonna make the right decision all the time, and I might piss you off, and I'm gonna try my best.
Do we need to make that in writing on, on this employee related, that it's part-time, full-time, all employees, probationary? Um, you know, we wanna make sure that we take it there, that anybody.
We, we can make a note of all employees if that's my, all employees are, this business for all employees. And then I can also make a note too, make another bullet point that says we're gonna encourage uh, encourage split staffing or, you know, if 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 that's something that the department head feels is necessary or something. Chris, you have something?
One actually brought an amazing idea, amazing thought. I think a private business that also is in the courthouse, um, also help department.
Is public health subject to the same um protocol that every other department is? Because I, I'm just curious, I think it needs, I'm sorry, I would.
Absolutely, this is building protocol. If you wanna operate in the building, you're gonna have to go by the protocol.
Last, last I checked, Brandon was the county owner of the building.
Yeah, this is, this is, this'll be protocol for all tenants as well. It's gonna have to be.
The abstract office, if that's, they've already, they already have their door shut.
Yeah, they're pretty prepared.
And and to, to eliminate the people walking by, just to say, hey, how are you? And again, case-by-case basis, we're gonna have to work with them as best we can and and inform them how we're gonna try to function this thing. And that'll be between, they'll have to talk with you, work with me, and we'll figure it out. We're all gonna have, again, it's, it's one of those deals where we're all gonna have to make sacrifices that this is gonna work together.
There's one thing for sure, this deal is gonna change America forever.
Yeah, that's a, it's a big change, so.
So what we do here tonight is gonna sell our precedents for the entities and businesses and towns.
It will, and 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 again, I I hope I'm not, I hope we're, I guess, and putting these in front of everyone, I hope I'm not leaving out too far ahead, but I think these are are serious, but at the same time, they're sustainable, and they're things we can do to try to keep everybody as healthy as we possibly can.
Always keep your eyes open for your fellow man and they always.
Sure, we are a community.
Everything we do before pandemic is a onemuscle, everything we do afterwards is insufficient.
Right.
Okay, so I'll, I'm just making some notes real quick, so I know to make some changes. Employees, stagger schedules.
Probably pandemic.
There's gonna be a possibility of staggering, having employees in here during the evening, I think that we should let law enforcement know.
Of course, yeah, Chris can work with law enforcement, tell them about the staggerers, cuz we're gonna be staggering schedules through social services as well.
So that, so that they don't call and say, um, yeah, your dad lives on all third floor, you know, there's people moving around.
Is that, is that, is that gonna be effective tomorrow, officially?
Well, we'll give the availability to stager schedules uh and and and, and once that happens. And any, and and we'll have to give the direct tomorrow morning too, after this happens, that send out an email, these are the new standards, any questions, comments, changes in schedules, point to you, and then CC me on everything, so I know what's happening.
Hey, and I think utilizing of social media goes a long ways. I think Katie, you did a really nice job with the statement that you did and Rhonda as well, and making sure that that gets shared with the Ramsey County site.
Yep.
And so it gets out to as many people as possible.
Yep, we can utilize our Facebook pages, everybody that has a Facebook, Facebook page, after we get posts out, share them. We can utilize the website, obviously, I'm gonna go on the radio tomorrow morning, I don't know when that will air, I hope as soon as possible. And I'll, I'll get out what our, what our message is, and then we're just gonna have to try our best to inform the public, and 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 we'll uh, can put that out to Eric as a press release or whatever too, so he'll do it on the, even if he doesn't air Coffee Time tomorrow, he'll uh put it on as 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 a news report like like you did out of the city last night, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the recommendations as amended. Seeing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
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 Vote the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, uh, next, since we're in this same thing, um, do we have copies of the emergency declaration? Do they have them in front of people here, or in front of all commissioners?
Yep.
Okay, let's do this emergency. Uh, this emergency declaration was put together, it's formed out of Cast County as well, and all of the other different counties have been looking at this. Essentially, we thought it was necessary to put it in place right now, uh, because now that it's a federal emergency, state emergency, local emergency, it'll allow us to tap the federal funds as they flow down through the state, through D E S and D O H. So if there's any questions or comments on it, uh, we, the only question that we had this afternoon when I was overlooking it was, um, Cast County did do theirs for thirty days, um, we put it out for ninety days. Just declaring the emergency for longer doesn't really make any changes or anything like that. Once, if and when this is done, if this is too long, hopefully, we can always just uh null the emergency at that point.
It, it won't be.
No, it won't be, I know, but I'm just saying, I'm thinking, I'm trying to be honest.
What we do approve, second.
The motion is second to approve the emergency declaration, we're gonna have to go on through the discussion.
Does also uh um make our emergency fund available?
Yeah, we're on.
Yes, yeah, and that would make our emergency fund available too. Okay, through the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries. Okay, back to the original stuff. Progressive discipline policy.
Yeah, and I don't know if you wanna go over that tonight, you know, we got a lot going.
You guys wanna keep, you guys wanna take care of that, or you wanna table it?
Okay, let, let me know if you can.
Sorry, okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to table the uh, the progressive discipline policy, or has a table it though? Technically, yeah, it's a non-debatable motion. Uh, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries. Not that I wanna put along in the meeting, but interesting, I went to a parliamentary proceeding class about that. Technically, tabling the motion can't be done from meeting to meeting. You're supposed to table within the meeting, or supposed to make a motion to, uh, not postpone, but something else.
We already tabled one.
Technically, you're supposed to table within a meeting, if it's for the next meeting, you're supposed to, if there's another motion to the next meeting.
Yeah, there's a different word for it.
Yeah, there's a different word, I can't think of it. Okay. Uh, okay, we're off of that, Kevin, what you got?
KLJ has put together that password for, for, that's basically the contract for inspection work on, uh, our family's authority on the food and health shed. And it looks fair enough to me, so I just moved it to.
Motion is second to through the. Motion, second.
Moving to.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, contract, I'm sure, I'm ready to.
Okay.
Uh, along with that.
Oh, you gotta, is this part of it, or do you want?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah. Pass to you, let's. Okay, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign, motion carries.
And in addition to that, uh, Matt Brerly has sent us a, the contract, but I probably should have that signed by this chairman.
This looks all right, Kevin?
Yep.
Here.
In fact, the contract is not by the state, and I'll say it's not, but Matt Brerly signed it, now we have this.
Okay.
One million, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Is that, that took then engineers estimate, everything, that was pretty low.
Yeah, that's right on.
Oh, yeah.
Is that the same motion, or is it?
This is a motion, we, we have, we approve KLJ, this is a motion for the separate contract, the whole contract.
First of all, the contract KLJ is the contract with uh, Matt Brerly.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, through the discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
And we have two summer maintenance contracts to sign so far, one from Millie Hops and one from Grant Hardwood Township for summer maintenance.
Okay.
Moving through, second.
You guys are going too fast. Okay, you got it?
Yep.
We have a motion in a second to approve the two summer maintenance contracts, through the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
And when we sell out the contracts, we sell out the load pass, every township has to sign a agreement for load pass that we ordered on a couple of years ago. So we have two of those to sign, the chairman has to also sign, all of them, or.
We have a motion in a second to approve the load pass contracts. I have one question on that. I had the question from somebody else I just talked to, I mean, talking about, they're doing load pass in any county, and in all honesty, I feel horrible, because I forgot we made that motion, that we were using it, but I mean, oh, yeah. When the, 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 uh, you know, so this is gonna essentially tie our system together. So when they're driving across township roads versus county roads, what's the split on the, on the money that comes off the load pass then?
Well, good question, percentage, I don't, I don't say that.
Because he said essentially how they would do it in, in that county, was that, that, the, the township was getting shorted pretty, pretty greatly. So we wanna make sure that we at least, when we get that, to that point, let's try to get an, you know, break it in front of us again to get an equitable split, so. Uh, so we have a motion in a second on the load pass. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have, we'll have the results at the next meeting for gravel projects, chip sale, and that stuff.
Okay. Questions for the pen? Seeing none, all right. Okay, emergency declaration was done. Home rule committee. Anybody interested? No?
I got two.
You do?
I have three.
Hey, hey. Cooking with, cooking with grease here, what's up? What now?
Pardon me?
No, I didn't get any.
Okay, well, what, what, what do we know?
Rodney Bell.
We'll do it, okay.
Andrea Martin.
And Jeff Wall will do it. And I think Paula said she would.
What's that now, guys?
I believe I heard it.
I took that wink last meeting as yes.
Yeah, well, yes, yeah, that is, that's yes.
Thank you, Paula.
It's a very hesitant yes, though.
And I believe Brad Barthwell as well.
Thank you.
You're really strange, isn't it?
Okay, so that is five, correct? Four or five? That's five. Um, do we wanna put commissioners on, or empower, anything like that, or?
Well, that, that is enough for the minimum.
All right, it's five, so it's up to us now, if we wanna add a commissioner or something, okay?
I'll make a motion that we put on, by upon wake though.
I'll second that.
We don't need a motion specifically, we'll just say we'll put our names on there, and then we'll make a motion for it.
You don't need a motion for that?
Not until, we'll just do the, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll go on as well.
And I, I think it'd be, uh, a quick one, one or two meetings. Yeah, that's, that's the intent of it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to figure out how to scam this thing.
Well, no, I think, I figure we'll wait until probably July to do it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to wait until it.
Again, a lot of them are.
Okay.
But we have to empower it today, or else we're, uh, blind, so.
No, we're fine, we got that stuff. So we have, we have a list of seven names, so would you like to make a motion to empower that whole seven names? Seven, we have a second, through the discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, forward Devil's Lake board appointments, we got Brad back there. Do we have any? Candy, you got something?
Candy?
Jeff Wall, something in there?
Chip, Chip's aboard. I really came for the emergency declaration to make sure that it got, so. Andy, you had this on, we, we talked about it, Jeff is on, Waichuan elected not to continue.
Right, right.
I've got three other, I'm, I'm looking for three others, so I kinda pushed it back to you guys to find another appointee for the advisory board, okay?
We're still short one, is that right?
We're still short one.
At large one, one in that large. Project, you know, that'll work around.
Yep.
Yeah. So, so who are we appointing then?
Reappointing Jeff Wall.
Jeff.
Reappoint Jeff. Motion to reappoint Jeff.
We have a motion in a second to reappoint Jeff Wall to for Devil's Lake. Are we gonna wanna advertise, or are you gonna go beat the bats and see if he can advertise?
For another one?
Yeah.
We'll shoot, should.
We'll find one.
I mean, well, I don't know, should we sort of, for the sake of ethics, advertise, so that we're not stacking boards with people?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it okay that we appoint him and we advertise within the same room?
Yeah, that's fine.
We have a motion to appoint Jeff Wall and advertise for the second motion, through the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. North Central Housing Board appointments. Nothing yet, and, yeah, they're gonna work on that, so we can table that on that meeting, if that's okay. Anybody wanna make a motion to table?
Oh, move the table.
We have a motion in a second. Not in favor, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Visitors Committee Board appointment. And Suzie has sent some information to me, would you like to say what, not, or should I just pull it up?
Up to you, whichever you prefer.
Uh, essentially, I'll, I'll, I'll let you talk, I talk too much.
Yeah, go ahead, Susan.
You're here, you came here, we might as well let you talk.
No, long story short, um, at the city commission meeting last night, we have to do an ordinance change in order to change the, the policies for the visitor committee, right now, the ordinance reads, it's a committee of seven. So we need to, to go through the process to make that a committee of nine, and so that will have to go through two readings, so it won't be approved until the second reading, or till the second meeting in April. Um, we did have to do a small change on the visitor city guidelines, the city commission requested that the two members at large be appointed by the city commission, as the Ramsey County would have the two appointed, um, to, of the other two to make it the committee of nine. Um, so with that, my recommendation was that we let the city commission approve the ordinance change to be the committee of nine, which would basically make it legal for you guys to, to appoint your two, to the committee. And then at that time, you had already approved our visitor committee guidelines, which would, um, combine both city and county, and with those small changes, I would suggest then you just do a, a, a relook at that and approve at the same time.
Yeah, and we can table it until, until, not, not the next meeting necessarily, but table it until, through.
Move the table, help further notice.
Okay. Motion is second to table.
Whole commission second.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. And we're at, at, and, and just for clarity's sake, so we, this won't go, uh, we won't have any tax collection until the next quarter that actually rolls into the visitors committee from the county, correct?
Well, I believe the tax will still be collected, starting in quarters, but we wouldn't see any money until like our collections, until like, I think it's six weeks after.
Okay, so we got some time to get it done, and still get our people appointed and so forth, so in a future meeting, whenever they get done with their ordinance, we can advertise at that point, get a lottery, you can, uh, get it out. Okay, very good. New business, we don't have anything. Okay. Visitors and delegations, anybody got something to throw out there for us? Nope. Okay, announcements.
Has anyone heard they canceled the, uh, town shoe officers?
Yes, well, if they had, then we just canceled it for them. Suzie has something for visitors and delegations pushing for it, right?
Yes, I do have one question, um, I know when you guys were speaking earlier, you aren't going to any like committee meetings at the moment, is that correct?
Correct, that, that aren't legally required, at least in person, if we can do something, telephone, yes, of course, that's.
The only reason I'm asking is we have it out, and it was made public that we're opening bids on Wednesday for late access.
Tomorrow?
No, uh, the last Wednesday of the month, so I'm just making sure, if we can still do that, or if I need to make arrangements for like a conference call, or. I'd like to keep that going, 'cause the, it actually starts May first.
Is, is that something that is technically? Yeah, we could do telephonic, that would be fine. Yeah, and I guess, yeah, it's, it's an empowered committee, but it's not legally required, so. And it's under ten people too, so, but if you can do it telephonically, where they can call in, call the meeting order, open the bids, and, and, and that's the best option at this point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't need to do anything back, 'cause I, I do have a few bits in my.
No, of course.
Okay.
And again, that's where, your best decision that we can make will be the best thing we can do at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay.
For, for the next meeting, was the question, our next meeting, uh, you know, are we, are we legally able, given that we just declared a state of emergency, to like livestream the commission and?
I think most of the things we're gonna talk about after looking at the new guidelines put out by the H U S office for open records, or open meetings.
I mean, 'cause you could still record it and livestream at the same time, and you should even, and you could even take comments and then on like Facebook, and livestream.
And that was kinda one of the first things I thought about, is Facebook live, like being an option, but we're gonna have to work through Kerry and Candy, and then they'll have to work with me and DA H. And, and I'll, we'll try to, we'll try to get it up, I'll make sure that I, I'll make sure that I get out to everybody before the next meeting, how are we doing.
Because this, this will be a much more serious issue, but.
All right, oh, God. So we'll figure out if there's options, if we can telephone it, or something. Nothing else, gonna go to the order? Something like. We are adjourned.